Welcome to our first board meeting of 2024. I invite you to join us in standing as we say the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. First up, I'm going to ask for a motion to amend the agenda to include new staff introductions.
I move to amend the agenda to include the introduction of new staff hires.
Is there support?
Support.
Any discussion? All in favor of amending the agenda to include new staff introductions, please say aye.
Aye.
That motion passes. And now, we're going to approve the agenda as amended. May I have a motion to do that?
I move we approve the agenda as amended.
Thank you Danielle, is there support?
Support.
Everyone's supporting, awesome, any discussion? All in favor of approving the agenda as amended, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, I almost forgot to vote, so. And the motion to approve the amended agenda is passed. And next up, I'm going to pass out over to Superintendent Kirby for a moment of silence in honor of Marion Janopoulos.
All right, well, thank you. Over, over the school break, we lost a champion for children and, and lead dragon. Marion Janopoulos passed away at the age of eighty. Marion had fifty years in education, she was ten years as a superintendent here at Lake Orion, and she also was a superintendent at Oxford. So if you would, at this time, please join me in a moment of silence. Thank you.
Thank you Ben, appreciate that, a moment of her honor. So next up, we have our organizational meeting, and I hereby open that. The Board of Education operates under a hierarchy of authority that includes the US Constitution and federal laws, the Michigan Constitution and state laws, and the State Board of Education, and our Board, the Lake Orion Community Schools Board of Education's Policies and Bylaws. Policies are that which the Board uses to govern the school district, and bylaws are that which govern the Board. And according to our bylaws, zero one five one, we are to organize annually, not earlier than January first, and not later than the second Wednesday in January, at a meeting held for that purpose. The organizational meeting is a meeting within a meeting. As the ranking officer of the preceding year, I now open the organizational meeting of 2024. First, we'll vote in the officers of the Board of Education for this year. Any Board member may make a nomination, and nominations do not need to be seconded. So at this time, nominations are in order for the Office of President.
I'd like to nominate Danielle.
Danielle Brissette, there is a nomination for Danielle for President. I'm not even going to ask for another nomination, I'll take that as a vote, and we'll move on from there. So at this time, I'm going to ask Julie for a roll call, please.
Yes.
Sorry, Ms. Flaherty?
Yes.
Ms. McQuiston?
Yes.
Snowey?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Congratulations Danielle, you are the new Board President. I'm going to pass the gavel over to her and make it official.
Thank you.
And she's going to conduct the rest of the meeting.
So official now. Okay, so next, can I please have any nominations for Vice Presidents?
Madam President, I'd like to nominate Heather for Vice President.
Hearing no others, we'll go right to the roll call, Julie? Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Ms. McQuiston?
Yes.
Ms. Snowey?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Excellent, congratulations Heather. There we go. Okay, next up will be nominations for Secretary, please.
I'd like to nominate Susan Flaherty for Secretary.
Excellent, roll call vote, please.
Brissette?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Ms. McQuiston?
Yes.
Snowey?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Excellent, the passes unanimously, congratulations Susan, absolutely. And then lastly, can I please have a nomination for the Office of Treasurer?
I'd like to nominate Jake for Treasurer.
I was going to beat you to that.
May I please have a roll call vote? Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Ms. McQuiston?
Yes.
Ms. Snowey?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Congratulations to Jake. Yes, and I do want to mention, he is not here this evening because he is under the weather. So we look forward to his return at the next meeting. Okay, so moving on from that, we have the appointment to community committees and representatives to our various committees. I printed off copies.
Awesome.
Because you know, the teacher and me can't not. I'll give you one already. So just a little background on that, obviously, we all fill out, for those who are on the Board, for those who don't know, we, we fill out a Officer Questionnaire and express interest. And Burgett and I actually got together Monday morning, and based on those, you know, we tried to keep some of the committees, you know, at least one or two members that had been on the committee before, and then, you know, using people's interests and availability and what they expressed on the form, go from there and, you know, fill in, you know, the committee assignments. So as they stand right now, Finance will be Jake, Burgett, and Susan. Policy will be Heather, Scott, and Susan. Superintendent Evaluation will be myself, Burgett, and Jake. Lamp of Learning would be Scott, Susan, and Steve. And in Steve's absence, Heather is going to be an alternate on that committee until Steve returns to take his position. Curriculum will be myself, Jake, and Burgett. And then Board Self-Assessment will be myself, Heather, Steve, and then once again, in Steve's absence, Scott's going to be the alternate on that committee until Steve can join us again. And then, as far as representatives on various committees, Oakland Schools Budget Committee is Jake. The OCSBA Government Relations Committee will remain Burgett. Heather's going to remain as the Sexuality Education Advisory Committee. Wellness Committee will be represented by Susan, and the Head Start Policy Committee will be represented by Scott. So, like I said, you know, we, we do the best we can and try to accommodate as much as we can, and, you know, I feel like any of us could serve on any committee, you know, we, we're all capable. So, so any thoughts or discussion on that, or? Okay. Next up, we need to adopt the calendar of the Board of Education meeting schedule, and I, I know we got a amended calendar after it was recognized that one of our meetings was going to be during spring break, so we did receive the amended calendar to adopt. So may I please have a motion to adopt the twenty-four, twenty-five Board of Education meeting schedule?
I move that we adopt the twenty-four, twenty-five Board of Education meeting schedule as presented.
Thank you, Burgett, is there support?
Support.
Thank you. Any discussion? Vote, I was like, where am I going? This is not roll. Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And I forgot, aye. Okay, the motion passes, thank you. So we've adopted the twenty-four, twenty-five Board of Education schedule. And at this time, that is all we have for the organizational meeting, so I will officially close the organizational meeting, and we will move back into our regular meeting. Yeah, excellent. And then with that, we will move on to learning highlights and communication updates with Mark.
Thank you, Happy New Year to everyone.
Happy New Year.
Thank you Danielle. We, we had a lot of, there will be a lot of holiday festivities in here because that, you know, the end of the year, a lot of things happened, so that was kind of exciting, and we want to capture some of that for you, we only had a couple days this week. DECA, which is not a holiday event, actually, Lake Orion has a great success with Julia Dalrymple in the DECA program, which is your marketing and business competition for the high school students. But one of, they had nine, they had, like, on December sixteenth, Lake Orion High School hosted the district event, and that was, the regional, the regional event, I guess it was, and that really is a huge undertaking. There were tons of students there, I was there, and they had judges from all across the state, or the whole area and everything, and they were all, you know, contributing, so there was a lot of volunteer time as well, but the students are all dressed professionally, and it was, it was really an interesting day. Thirty-nine of the high school students moved on, and they're going, and twenty-six, twenty-six were victorious, and third, and thirty-nine competed, actually, sorry, from the high school. And so that's a pretty good percentage of them moving on, they're always prepared, Julia does a great job, and they'll go on and march to the state competition in Detroit, so it was really an exciting day for them. The Lions Club, obviously, as we know, is a great supporter of our, of our community and everything, and they do these food drive, this food drive every year in December, and all the schools, you know, drive, they gather and they all compile what they have, and they bring it to the, to CIRK, and it's all packaged and everything. Heather was there that day, and she saw, and the Phases students attended and helped out with the packaging, and the sorting and everything, and Randy DeRiker, who's one of the teachers there, is really motivated. She's done this, had them do this the last couple of years, and getting them there to participate, like, all the other volunteers really, you know, they really benefited from it. Heather, do you, you really saw the response?
I had a great time, you know, just spending time with them too, because they get, when they're done, we're working through, we're doing it all, got to hang out with them, we talked about what we would do with a million dollars. So we had really, we all had really great conversations, a lot of Ferraris and Lamborghinis and stuff. And so, but yeah, I mean, they do a great job, their staff is remarkable. So just really enjoy seeing them in action, and the whole event is, is really great for the community, so.
The Hour of Code, it was held right before our last board meeting, but, you know, it was really, it's an interesting event, because what it does is it highlights, you know, engineering, and the coding, and the computer engineering, this is something that, you know, Heidegger's department is really focused on, media specialists really push and everything, and computer science teachers, like Nick, and everything. They really do a lot of different things, and, and the best thing about the coding is from the lowest level, they do these little, these little Sphero robots up to the, you know, Team Three Oh Two students, who, you know, do these very involved engineering things and computer engineering. So it's really something that encompasses the whole district, and our media specialists and our computer science teachers really kind of dive into that. So that was nice. Again, Pine Tree Center, you know, they had, they did a real creative thing, they had holidays around the world. So what they did is throughout the building, they set up different rooms to highlight one of the holiday, like Christmas in America, and then in Italy, and Mexico, and then Hanukkah, and Kwanzaa, what they did in Latin America, Ramadan, Chinese New Year, all of these different things. So the students went around, and there was food at each one, so they were motivated to go to each, move on and on to the next one. But it was really fun, there were classes, you know, so each class moved as a group, and it was really a fun experience for them. In terms of the principals, you know, Gretchen Hines and Ken News have made this kind of an annual tradition with their students, their elementary principals, obviously, Blanch Sims and Stadium Drive, they try to, I don't know if that's a competition, but they both really dive into the opportunities somewhat literally, I think. You see, they both dress up, and, you know, they, and the students love it, because it's what, what's going to happen for that day, and just in that last week before break, so it's a lot of fun. The holiday music, some of you were able to get to concerts, you know, they had the Winter Wonderland concert, and the middle schools also did a lot, it's beautiful music. Ben was at the high school concert. It really is opportunity in all the schools to, you know, kind of wrap up the calendar year and everything, and send everyone off on a warm note. The Market Day is really one of the special things that Carpenter Elementary does, a number of schools do it, but the fourth and fifth graders really get into it, they built it over the first semester at Carpenter. And what they did, you know, they had economic lessons, so the students would get, you know, quote-unquote money throughout the year for achieving and doing good things in the classroom, and staying behaved, and all these things. So then they were able to use that money, and they made their own, their own different projects throughout the time. And then, you know, they made it at home, they had an allotment of, they could spend only a certain amount of real money, I think it was seven dollars or something, to put their whole thing together. And then they go, they go around, the fourth grader, fifth graders did it in the morning, and then the fourth graders in the afternoon, and they all bought money from each other and sold goods and services, so that was kind of fun. This is at the high school, Mr. Mearschart, you know, really does a great job with the students in his daily living class. You know, what they did is they worked to bake cookies, they shopped for the ingredients, they baked over a hundred seventy cookies, and they went around with little gift bags around the school and delivered them to teachers and everything. It was really something that, it's great. And, you know, as Dr. Hoskin attest, you know, and Ms. Everett, it's really something that Eric Mearschart and the whole special education staff, they really try to involve them in the school, and connecting with the different parts of the school. They have these, you know, unified basketball, they have the unified robotics, they have all these different things, and it's, it's unique. I think it doesn't happen in every district, so in every high school for sure, so that's really something that's unique. In terms of award winners, there was Lindsay and Jamina are there at the top with Dr. Hoskin and Ms. Everett. They were honored for the Michigan Technological Society, Society, Society of Women Engineers Certificate of Merit, I'll get it out there. Lake Orion High School teacher down, Sam Reamy, was recognized for his exceptional service as the Southeast Michigan and Thumb Region Scholastic Art Awards Advisory Board Member. And he'll go to an award ceremony in February at the DIA. So a lot of great things happening in the district. Any questions for anyone?
Awesome, Mark, thank you.
Thanks so much.
Thank you so much. Always great to see, I know, we rolled it right out of holiday break, but it's fun to see some of the holiday festivities that occurred. Excellent, okay, so we're going to move right on to presentations, and I'm going to.
Oh, we have our new staff there.
Oh my gosh, see, and I even the one that amended, I'm still going to turn it over.
So I were here.
I was going to ask where we're going to put it.
We're going to put it right here. We're going to move right on to introduction of new staff hires, and I'm going to turn that over to Adam.
Awesome, well, thank you Danielle. We have with us tonight Shannon Hoynah and her husband. Shannon is being recommended tonight as our new Director of Business and Finance. She's coming to us from Holly, Holly Area School District, where she has served as the district accountant since two thousand twenty-one. Really has an impressive resume, impressive experiences, did a great job throughout the interview process, and really shown above a quali, a very talented candidate pool. She has multiple degrees and certifications, including an MBA and MSBO Chief Financial Officer certification. Her positive energy will be a great addition to the Business and Finance Department and to the Lake Orion Community School District. So we are excited to have her in attendance tonight, and it'll be my pleasure to recommend her as our new Director of Business and Finance.
Awesome.
Congratulations, welcome.
A huge welcome to Shannon, we're welcoming you to the Dragon family, and we look forward to getting to know you. Okay, so now, we can move on to presentations, and I will turn that over to Ben.
All right, great, and Shannon and Matt, if you guys, if you all want to leave, this is, yeah, totally appropriate to leave. Yes, absolutely, we appreciate you being here, nice meeting you, Matt.
Yes, too.
Take care. As far as presentations, we're going to begin this evening with our school showcase. We have Lake Orion High School first, and we have Dr. Haas, did you want to introduce, or do you want me to introduce Mr. Schultz? Okay, so we have, we have teacher Nick Schultz, and Nick is going to also introduce one of our students for our esports. So please come to the podium and, and share with us, thanks for being here.
Thank you. Excuse me, sorry about that. All right, so I'm Nick Schultz, and I coach our esports team over at the high school, and I love esports, it's great. It's great for our students, and the fact that we compete from my classroom, and I have to recruit a transportation to take us across the state and still compete with those teams is awesome. But as any good coach, he has good players, and Rowan Cleland Host is our captain for our esports team, and he has a little presentation about what we, he did last semester, and what we're going to be doing this semester, so.
Hi, I'm Rowan.
Welcome.
Hi, welcome.
So what esports does each year, well, going to, hopefully, the, every year, we have two seasons competitive against state teams from other schools. In the fall season, we have a competition each week on Wednesdays after school. There's competitions to decide full leaderboard against other schools in the state. And that happens until around November, and then the winter offseason begins where there's no real competitions or anything. And then it goes straight into the spring, spring season, where we once again have competitions each week, and decides a new champion across the state. We aim as high as possible during those competitions, since really, we shoot for the stars. We have so many players coming in this year, and I really hope that with our second season coming up this spring, we'll have a good placing. Each team has three minimum players and maximum of three bench players. And we currently only play Super Smash Bros. Ultimate, which is a platform fighter game, with over eighty individual players, characters that you can play, that each have individual move sets that you can learn to high level. This is the upcoming season we have this spring, I'm looking forward to it. Right now, we're in just the enrollment stage, I'm deciding who goes in what teams, we're having casual competitions to decide that, and it's a great learning experience, finding out which players are fit best with each other. And, and competing against each other is great for a social interaction. When building a team like that, it's great collaboration, getting to know each other's play styles, and knowing each other on a personal level. And once you get into a team and start going in the competition, it's good to fight against big interstate teams that have trained a lot, and it's good learning experience to hone your skills against such strong players. In a team, there's several roles, the top player, whoever we find to be either most leadership style or otherwise most skilled, we have them manage the logistics of the match, and also lead the team as a whole, cheer them on, and decide who should play against what enemy team. The members themselves work together to decide who has the best playset against the enemy, and also working to cheer each other on and work together. The bench can step in whenever the members aren't able to make it, or we just feel that the bench would be better suited against our opponent. We also have a YouTube channel, mostly just for capturing good moments where people showed some real skill. And it's not really much for publication, as it is for showing each other our great moments. Any questions?
That's awesome. Yeah, go ahead.
Who is your favorite Smash Brother character to play?
Probably Kirby.
The answer.
That's funny. How, how is it decided what game you guys compete on? Is that something that's decided, like, across the state, or how does that work per year? Does it ever change, I guess, too?
There's several competitions going each year, currently, we've only joined Super Smash Bros., since we have a ton of interest in that, practically everyone in gaming club likes that game the most. There's been some interest in a few other games, but we're kind of in a little bit of gray area, not knowing whether there's enough interest, or whether it's a good idea to have each one.
Right, so it's more interest based on, and Super Smash Brothers is obviously a huge, you know, game, many, many players, so that's awesome.
I have a couple of questions. So if you don't mind, I'd love to know what year you are.
I'm a junior.
You're a junior, so you got another year ahead of you after this, so tell me, do you, your coach is thrilled about that. Is this at every high school? Who's your main competitor in the high school?
I don't think we have a specific competition exactly.
Okay.
There's several schools across the state that we've gone against. The top person currently in state, top team, I believe is, was it Detroit Catholic School?
Detroit, Detroit Catholic Central.
Okay, interesting.
But they can recruit, so.
Yeah. And, and is this something you see yourself taking into in college? I know that like OU has an esports team. We've got some graduates on that, so.
Not quite sure yet.
Not quite sure yet, okay, fair enough. I appreciate that.
Definitely.
Thank you for your time this evening, appreciate that.
Any other questions or comments for esports? It's awesome, it's so cool, it's awesome. Well, thank you so much for taking the time this evening.
Coach Nick.
And Coach Nick, yeah, thank you so much and Rose and Dan for coming and introducing us to esports and the team that we have at Lake Orion. So thank you so much.
Good luck.
Good luck, yes, and you don't have to stay. Yes, good luck with your season.
They should be called Dragon Bros.
Yeah, Dragon Bros, right?
All right, very good.
Are there cookies?
Yeah.
Julie has cookies.
Oh, and you get the whole plethora of cookies.
Usually there's a bunch of kids.
Right, and you can take as many cookies as you would like.
All right, very good. So all right, we will move into the other sports that are at the high school. So Mr. Bell, if you could come forward and have your presentation on athletics, we would appreciate that. Many of you know Chris, but Chris has been athletic director in the district for quite a number of years and we had another successful fall and looking forward to him sharing those successes.
Good evening, everyone, happy new year, thanks for having me.
Happy new year.
Purpose tonight is just to talk about the fall season, even though it was, seems like a long time ago. But we did have a very solid fall, some great student athletes, our coaches did a nice job. Just some highlights as we go through. For the fall, we had about 994 student athletes competing in athletics and that's seven through 12. We featured 24 high school teams, freshman JV and varsity and 12 middle school teams. There's four middle school seasons. This was season number one, which featured the middle school level football, sideline cheer, girls' basketball and boys and girls' cross country. We, we were busy in the postseason as well, you know, hosting, we always get chosen to host several events. This year we hosted the, the girls' swim championships. You know, every year, and I just have to commend Monty Gallagher. Monty runs the county golf championships for the boys and the girls, does it twice a year and he does it every year because he does such a great job. And that's a huge undertaking that he takes on. We also hosted the OA Red Girls Swim Championships along with the MHSAA volleyball districts. And we had two rounds of the football playoffs this year. Kicking us off is our cross country program. Both programs are, are young, rebuilding and doing a phenomenal job. With the girls, head coach Kim Renus, now as you see, we had 40 girls participating. They finished fourth out of six teams in the OA Red, which is a top division. We had two young ladies, Hannah Dorok and Linda Lopez, who earned all league honors and both qualified for the state finals. Hannah just missed being an all-state runner, but she was right there. And then our boys led by Andrew McDonald, we had 33 boys participating cross country. They also finished fourth. We had two young men, Blake Peard and Mac Hoovner, who finished, who were named all-league and both qualified for the state finals as well. Our girls' golf program led by Monty Gallagher along with Ron Grubbs. We had 21 girls and we are one of the few schools, we actually offer a varsity team and two JVs. So Ron coaches both of the JVs and with Joanne Flood also assisting. So they do a great job. We finished fourth in the OA, second in the regional. Again, the team qualified for the state championships. And if, when the season started, we were so young and if you would have asked Monty if we would have qualified, he would have said, there's no way. But to see the work that they put in, you know, under the tutoring of Monty, they did a great job. We finished 10th in the state. We did win the Midland County Country Club Tournament. Ellie Britt placed 15th overall and was named Division One All-State. Emily Oliver was named for the Academic All-State Team. The whole team earned recognition as an academic all-state team. And our JVs, as you can see, the future looks good. The JVs went 10-0, 6-3. JV Green has won the, there's not really a JV League Championship, but Ron keeps track. They've won in nine out of the last 10 years, so Ron does a great job. Boys soccer program, our boys soccer team had another solid season and we had 71 boys participating in our soccer program. They finished the season 11-9, 4-2 in the OA White tied for second place. They did lose in the second round of the districts and we had four players who were all-conference. We also had four players who are listed as all-district players, a great group of young men. Our volleyball team, head coach Tony Scavarda, we have 51 girls that participate in volleyball. They finished with a 24-14-1 record. Now, see, it's a little deceiving, I don't know if anybody plays a tougher volleyball schedule in the state of Michigan than we do. And Tony does that on purpose. You know, we play in tough tournaments, he schedules one on the west side where we want to make sure that we see the best competition. And the girls really came along, they finished 6-2 in the OA Red, good for second place. They lost in district semis, they finished as an honorable mention, top 10 team in the state of Michigan. They had three players who were all-conference and Devin Brunk was recognized as an all-region and all-state player. Our water polo team, we, there are about 30 schools in the state of Michigan that play water polo and we're one of them. Our head coach Kevin Ott, we had 22 boys participate. And this is a co-op program where we also welcome athletes from Clarkson as well as Oxford. We don't get many Oxford kids, but we do get a few Clarkson kids every single year, but the majority of them are from Lake Orion. We finished 9-11-1 placing fourth out of six teams in Division Three. And going through their grades, you know, three quarters of the kids did qualify for academic honors, so they do a great job. Our girls' swimming and diving team, we compete again in an elite division, probably the strongest division in the state of Michigan with the schools that are in there. Haley Cornberger is our head coach, John Pearson is our diving coach. Our girls finished second in the red division, which is the highest in school history. As I said, given the competition, they're really doing a great job. They have a 3-2 dual league record, 7-3 overall. They did finish 18th overall at the state finals, highlighted by Kate Rhodes, who was ninth in the 200 freestyle, 11th in the 100 freestyle. So very successful season for our girls. And Haley, again, to her credit, she makes sure that she swims a very competitive schedule and she's really excited about the future of our girls' swimming and diving team. Our boys tennis team led by Eric Bracciano, our JV coach is Chad Ludwig. We had 33 boys participating in tennis. We carry a very large JV team, trying to give many student athletes a chance to participate as possible. We finished with a 9-5 season record, 2-3 in the OA White. They did win the Chippewa Valley Tournament. They finished fourth out of six teams in the OA White Division. And we had three young men earn all-conference honors, Ben Laco, Sri Sentil and Anthony Ronconi all earned all-league honors. Our mountain biking team, and this is, this is a monster. And I give credit to Nick Shaskos, who started this program years ago. And Nick has handed it off to Jill Heist and Richard Meyer, who now coach the team. But it takes an army of parents and volunteers to run this team and they do a great job. And we have athletes from pre-k through seniors. And they had to cap it, they literally, there's, there's, they could only handle so many athletes. We had 77 on the team. We had 11 athletes earn state championship awards. I've listed them all there so that you can see. And that's all the way from pre-k up through high school seniors. They had a very successful season. They practiced right there on the high school grounds. It's, it's crazy. It's one of those events that you have to see, to see, I mean, it's just a massive humanity. The hard work that they put in and they're very good at what they do. You know, it's, it's not a, you know, they, it's, as Richard said last year, they're introducing more and more technical obstacles that the kids have to practice and be able to navigate at high rates of speed on their bikes. And they do a great job. So it's a, it's another area where a lot, a lot of the high schools have this program, but it gives another great group of kids, you know, a chance to be part of a team and, you know, find a home in an area there at Lake Orion. Our varsity football team had a pretty good year this year. We had 154 boys in the high school participating. Obviously, I'm true you're aware, our varsity team finished 10-1. They were the OA Red Division Champions. It was the sixth team in school history to go through the regular season undefeated. We do play one of the toughest schedules in the state of Michigan. Not a lot of people are lining up to play us. A lot of the kids were very talented, had some great players. They did break a lot of records, but one that I wanted to highlight was their season scoring average was the second highest in school history. Only behind, there was a team way back in 1975 that averaged more points than this team. And that team went 8-1 back in 1975 and had some legendary athletes on that team. So if they're watching, they'd be happy to know that they were mentioned, but we're close. We had 10 players earn all-league honors and we had five players earn all-state honors. And, you know, obviously highlighted by Billy Roberson, who was named the all-state dream team. And it's quite a remarkable accomplishment. And Billy also leaves as our all-time leader in rushing yardage for a career at Lake Orion High School. And you know what's even greater about Billy, if you know him, just outstanding, humble, centered, character, young man. And so very proud of these guys, they had a great year and they were fun to coach. Our, we also have, and putting our sideline cheer and dance on here, their competition season is actually going on right now. But obviously they were, it was more, you know, performing during the fall. They were great support, you know, during our games and, you know, we had a great participation with our cheerleaders and our dancers. So I want to thank them for all their support. Our middle schools, we had a lot of participation in middle school programs. As I said, 141 boys played middle school football. We ran four teams, we had six teams of girls' basketball with 81 girls participating, six teams with cross country. And then we had two sideline cheer teams. So our middle schools were very busy as well. And then finally, we capped it off in November. November was the first of three signing dates that we have, that we celebrate during the school year. The next one will be the first, the first Wednesday in February. But during, in November, we had 13 student athletes commit to play at the college level. And you'll see anything there from Kayle Gahan at Duke, you know, all the way down to, you know, from NAIA schools, Division Two schools. This is a very talented group of athletes. And what stood out is this was the, the power of the young ladies with this one. We had 12 young ladies and, and one gentleman. But they're all great athletes and a lot of their seasons are still in front of them. So we have a chance to see them play, you know, through the winter and the spring. So we're really excited about them, but with great, great kids. Obviously the job in the classroom as well, so they have that opportunity. So very successful fall. We're knee-deep now into winter and we'll see you in a month or two to talk about the winter season. Are there any questions?
Yeah, before we get into questions, you do a great job of recognizing the great work our student athletes do and you oftentimes recognize when our coaches are recognized as well. Didn't our football coach get some recognition as well? Could you share that with us?
It happens when you have good kids.
Yeah.
I was recognized as our league, our division coach of the year and then the regional coach of the year.
Yeah, congratulations.
Congrats.
Football for you.
You.
Yes.
You alluded to it and I just want to add on to it. When I was at the football banquet and the coaches were speaking of the players, of course, they talked about their on-field accomplishments. But more than that, they highlighted everything they are off the field. And I, all of our student athletes are amazing students, amazing people. And I credit you and all of your coaches for fostering that environment and making sure it's more than just the sport. It's a family and, you know, and it's really appreciated, so thank you. Any other comments, questions? I don't think so. Well, thank you, Chris, for being here and.
Thank you.
Congrats on a successful fall season. Okay. So that wraps up our presentations. Next up, we have public participation related to action items on the agenda and we currently have no one signed up this evening. So we will move straight on to strategic area discussion items and governance with Ben.
Okay, great, thank you. Just wanted to recognize, I know the board's well aware, but for our community, we do have our non-homestead and sinking fund replacement millages that will be on the ballot February 27th, 2024. We have been really distributing information. Voters should receive postcards if they haven't this week. They should be getting them this week. There'll be things in the Orion Review, we've been doing presentations. Anybody has any questions, they can, you know, communicate with Mark Snyder, myself. You go to our website, there's a green tab under election information and they can touch that and get all things election there. So I'm really excited about that and really want to make sure that we're providing the information that's necessary for an educated vote. As far as the legislature, they started back up today. So today was day one, there was some, some work that was put in, no, no action really to, to recognize. But a couple of things I did want to recognize about the legislative session is they currently are at 54-54. So there's no more Democratic majority like there was before, but there's two open seats. And there will be a special election, January 30th and April 16th to fill those seats basically. And then we'll see where they go. At this point, the passage of, of bills and that will take crossing over of their party lines. And so it'll be, it'll be interesting to see how things go. They're also facing that the court has ordered them to redraw, that the, that the legislative districts and 13 of them get redrawn. So that'll be another dynamic that takes place. And then certainly the budget that is, you know, necessary for the state as well as, you know, school districts and, and everybody related there. As far as 2023, they certainly had, you know, a busy year. A few highlights that I just wanted to recognize that were impactful for schools and, and students alike is the repeal of the retention requirement for the grade three law. And then also the A to F accountability, school accountability system was repealed. And so we no longer have that. The sinking fund, sinking fund flexibility to add transportation costs, that certainly was impactful. And that's part of why we're doing our replacement millage with the sinking fund. The teacher and counselor, counselor license reciprocity has really helped as far as getting access to teachers and counselors from other states as they come to the state of Michigan. And then the retirement options, the default option change, which is again, a real positive for staff in the state of Michigan for retirement. And then the educator evaluations have been overhauled. The, the student achievement portion is now, you know, locally decided, 20% moving forward into next year, I should say. So those were, you know, real big pieces that, you know, that impact our schools and so on. And I just wanted to make sure to share that. The governor will have her state of the state on January 24th when we're having our next board meeting. But ultimately, that's when we first start to see the sneak peeks of what budget priorities will be too. So that's where we first saw the universal preschool, that's been talked about a lot. But we'll be, we'll be looking forward to what she has to say on that evening, so. Any questions for me?
Questions for Ben? Okay, so thank you, Ben. And that moves us to our policy committee report and I believe Heather is handling it this evening.
Yes, so we have the first reading here for these policies that you had the opportunity to review. So if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer that. Scott was also president of the meeting and we can kind of give you an idea if you had any questions for us.
I mean, most of these policies were just pretty straightforward. Pretty straightforward and need change based on some new laws and whatnot that were, as we just discussed, came into effect and were passed last year. So, you know, just some wording. The, the one that I always, you know, is going to be the biggest evolving beast is the AI. You know, that's just, you know, and, you know, Burgett can say the same. When we were at MASP, they basically said this train has left the station and is going 800 miles an hour. So it's just going to be a matter of districts keeping up. So, you know, I appreciate the efforts in that and trying to manage, you know, how we approach AI because that is not a, you know, not an easy one to keep up with, so.
Excellent, any other questions on any of the policy? You know, it's the first reading, so. Okay, I think we are good, thanks Heather. Okay, is there anything else? Okay, so that moves us right to student achievement with Heidi.
Okay, so a couple of things this evening. We are making final plans for our professional development day that we have coming up on Monday. Staff had an opportunity to choose from multiple sessions. And these sessions range a broad variety of topics. And so in addition to that, the well-being fair is also being held on Monday. And that was also a session that staff could choose to attend as well. So we kind of. So we kind of wrapped that all into that whole big day. So we're really looking forward to being together. This is one day in the district where everybody has professional development. So we're looking forward to that. In addition, I know that you have heard me talk about CARESALIS and I know Ben has had some information in his updates as well. Today, we actually had a training for all of our school psychologists, social workers and administrators regarding this program that we are implementing in the district. We're going to kick this off next week. Essentially, CARESALIS, this is a service that will be provided to our families to help when they want to coordinate outside services, counseling, therapy. Sometimes it is very difficult to navigate the system. And so CARESALIS is a provider that will help families if they choose to manage that for them, making the phone calls, finding out who accepts their insurance, or if they don't have insurance, how to manage that as well. So we're very excited about this opportunity for our families and we think that this will greatly help, you know, our psychologists, our social workers, our administrators who are trying to assist families receive outside services. But it often is difficult, difficult to navigate and especially trying to find organizations and therapists and counselors that are taking new clients and, you know, working all of the system. So we're, we're excited about this and that will kick off next week.
That's awesome. Okay, any questions on that portion of Heidi's? Yes, Heather.
So is the, the CARESALIS a partnership? Is there a cost to the district? What's the layout for offering this?
Yep, there is a cost to the district and we are using a grant for the cost for the district. And I think it's, I think this one, we signed up for three years, if I remember correctly. This was a three year partnership.
No cost to families, we're bearing that.
Right, no cost to families. So for the service.
Any other questions?
Has it been successful in?
Yes, other districts, other districts, there have been a couple throughout Oakland County as well as outside of the county that we followed up with and they have, they had a lot of great things to say.
That's awesome.
Part of the Dragon Community Champions is Ascension Providence individual and they acknowledge the, the partnership and the benefits of it today when we talked about it at the meeting.
Awesome. Sounds great. Okay, on to Bond.
Bond, we did not have meetings today. They start up again next week, but as I had mentioned at the last board meeting, we will start January 17th, I believe that is next week. With some design committees kicking off for preparations for bond projects for summer of 2025.
Excellent. Okay, any other questions or comments for Heidi? All right, well, thank you. We'll look forward to the next round of bonds, bond work. All right, we're going to move right on to human resources and right on down to Adam.
So I'm going to make my way to the podium, but first officially just a recommendation to hire of Shannon Hoynah as our new director of business and finance. Yeah, so there's that and then I'm going to make my way to the podium.
And as Adam makes his way to the podium, one of the things I wanted to recognize and he mentioned it a little bit, our talent pool that, that came forward to be part of our, part of our team under the supervision of Andrea was, was good and the, and the decision was, was tough. They had some good candidates, so we were very encouraged by that. We talked a little bit about the sparsity of talent for other school districts and so on, so we were very happy about that.
That's great. Perfect.
All right, so we have our schools of choice presentation here. Play with it too much, right? There was a couple in the board packet, there were a couple of errors there with numbers. So I know Julie mailed out to you an amended copy there earlier this afternoon or this morning. So you guys should have that paper copy in front of you right now. Yeah, those are the correct numbers. So this, this portion right here at the top, that top chart, those are based on numbers as we've talked about, we talked about in the fall and we've talked about in the past. Those numbers do fluctuate daily, but these numbers are from our January 4th enrollment count. So this is how we would run our lottery. I was going to say, I see it in front of me, I'm like, what are you pointing at?
I know, except I can't do this to the heart.
You want me to pause?
Okay, so these are numbers based on one for if we were running our lottery day, this is a chart we would look at. Our lottery will be held if it is needed in the spring, in April. All grade levels in here would be advanced by one year and whatnot. And for kindergarten, we use projections for those numbers as we discussed in the fall based on like the Burke County birth rates, the capture rates that I talked about. And we also use our information that is available and numbers that's available from our kindergarten roundup and kindergarten registration, which is held in March. And we also look at past trends in buildings where there are differing patterns of enrollment and registration, meaning sometimes we get buildings that lag a little bit behind in the enrollment, sometimes they are more upfront with that enrollment. So we just look at past trends at those buildings and make those projections for the kindergarten numbers at that time. The lower portion of this page, whoa, too far, just shows our percentages at grade levels across the district. You'll see on the, the far right column, the current school of choice percentages at each grade level, all very healthy right there. We only have one grade level that goes slightly above that, 10% at 11. And every other grade level is at 10% or below, which is great. And then as a district, we are at 8.84% with that.
Hey, Adam.
Yes.
When you were talking about kindergarten and the rates, we're, isn't it still kind of notorious that parents come in late in the game registering kids? So kindergarten especially to know how many a class is going to hold?
It is a, it is an educated guess.
So like till August, maybe sometimes in September, you're never even sure what your numbers are.
There are some buildings where that trend is more prevalent than others. And so we look at what the trends have been with that. As the kindergarten elementary principals have a very firm grasp on that. They work with myself, they work with teaching and learning and we really have discussions on that. But that lot, when we are holding that lottery, it is an educated guess. Yes. And we've seen that in the past couple of years. I know two years ago, we had to add a couple of sections at kindergarten in two buildings. This past year, we had to shift an extra section of first grade at Carpenter down to kindergarten because just kind of some booming enrollment that happened in that last two weeks leading up to the beginning of the school year. So, yeah. And we do our best to take that into account, but at the end of the day.
It's a moving target.
A little bit of a moving target, yeah. We do our best with that. This, this sheet we have, this chart we have seen before as well. This is again, based on our numbers on January 4th. Like we talked about, the, the resident enrollment at kindergarten, it can fluctuate a lot per building from the information we have at the time of the lottery to the time of the beginning of the next school year. So there is some fluctuation with that. We do our best to take that into account with the lottery. Typically, we bring in about 40 kindergarten school of choice students. We do offer more than 40 because not everyone actually follows through with enrollment. There's a very varying amount of reasons for that. Could be they didn't get the building they wanted, could be difficulty with travel with the building they were assigned, or it might be that they just had a change of heart and they don't follow through with enrollment. So we typically offer more than 40 at kindergarten, but we end up at right around the 40 mark. I think this year, this year we were at 43 for kindergarten, or we are 38 kindergarten students at the district level. With the school of choice migration data that we looked at in the fall, with the fall enrollment presentation as well, we do try to take a few in each grade level to account for this because there is some attrition annually at each of the grade levels, again for varying reasons, is to account for that. And at the bottom is, I keep on wanting to make that a touchscreen. At the bottom is a school of choice percentages at each building. If you look on the far right column in the total, you'll notice that just one building is above 10%. That's Carpenter. Last year, we were pushing 15% with that. So we addressed that with the school of choice numbers. You'll notice that they are only at 7% in kindergarten, so that helped those numbers out quite a bit and we'll continue to address that in future years. But all buildings other than that are below that 10% threshold. And then as a district at the elementary level, we're at 9.17%, which is great. Fourth grade is the only grade level that dips slightly above that 10%, getting up to 10.71. But all of the grade levels are below that 10% threshold, which is great as well.
And is that particular table with all the red in it, is that a reflection of a January point in time?
That is a reflection of January 4th.
This is again, a moving target. If a kid moves in, it doesn't take many kids to alter this percentage point, right?
Typically throughout the school year, you're not going to have school of choice number fluctuations, we're going to have resident.
Exactly, but that's still.
Yeah, which can be positive or negative. Yes, yep. But you know, when we ran our, when I gave our fall enrollment presentation, these numbers were similar.
Were similar.
Carpenter at that time was the only one above 10%, which was good. And it was a similar percentage right there, so that, that was a positive as well.
Yes, Heather has a quick question.
Yes. When you said that you addressed it, so you're taking in less kindergarten students and school of choice on the backend, is that, so when you say you're addressing it, how are you doing that as far as making sure?
Looking at, as you look at, like with Carpenter in particular, are you mentioning?
Yes, well, we can use that as an example of the one you mentioned.
Carpenter, as you see throughout grades, first grade through fifth grade, those are all in the red. And so what we did, we did not accept school of choice students in those grade levels. So that, or it was a very limited amount. And so that is what, that is how we addressed it. So we lowered the number with that.
So over a couple of years, it'll fix itself?
Yes. And as you look like at the fifth grade in that building, they're at 15%. Like when that grade level moves on to the middle school, that will lower that, that percentage overall of the building, I'm sure, so.
Because the only way to really, like for it to figure itself out is for school of choice students to leave, correct? Really, I mean, at the red, like the red number would only adjust itself if, so, okay, I'm a little confused.
Or more resident students.
If we have more residents. So these numbers, I'm just looking at it as just school of choice, it's different?
So the, the red numbers show what percentage is school of choice students. Represent, so basically you're, you're correct in that if, in my understanding, correct me if I'm wrong, Adam, it's if, if a school of choice student did move out, that would lower this number. But if, also if you had a resident student move in, that would automatically lower it because there would be more resident students. Yeah, exactly.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Does that make sense?
It does.
But I think you're dead on that that's going to be, that's a hard number to change.
Right.
Now, we do have, like what we talked about, and I don't have those numbers in front of me right now, but we talked about in the fall, the migration data, that we do have some attrition in school of choice students. The most common time for that attrition is when they transition to middle school. And again, that deals with travel, life, not the building they want, whatever it might be. But there is attrition at all grade levels in some way, shape or form, so we do try to take account into that. Yeah. But that typically doesn't happen mid-year, it's during the summer months and whatnot.
And among the school of choice students, did we bring in new to the district last year, do you recall?
60 last year. And typically, we bring in closer to 100, closer to double that, almost 120. So that was another way we addressed it in accepting less school of choice students at the, at the entire district level.
Right. Keep in mind, this reflects the students that have been here previous years plus the new ones. And that's why I asked him the question, just to make it clear that that was one of the ways that it was addressed, we brought in fewer new to help address that as well. But those students that were already here were here, so they still are part of that.
And obviously of those 60, if you look up above, 38 of them were in kindergarten and one was in DK. So that's 39 students right there. So that's only 21 in grades one through eight that were brought in.
Right. Burgett, did you have?
So yeah, I sort of have a point of clarification because I feel like it's very confusing what people are bringing up and the answers that are being portrayed.
Okay.
So to land on numbers that are in the 15% here, we didn't start out at that level because that's not our board policy for.
Correct.
So they, they, they have, for whatever reason of our, happened with our resident population, the numbers have crept up in certain areas, not because you've been adding them along the way. I just wanted to make sure that was perfectly clear. Right, meaning we're not going, intentionally going over the 10%. It's just we're having some resident students move out, which lowers the dividend as we talked, and then that causes the 15%, you know. And as Burgett has mentioned multiple times, it is a moving target. It could be different today than when you pull this data January 4th, right? So.
Correct. Does that help?
Yes.
All in all, moving targets. So we'll move on to the next slide. With the next slide, this is one that is kind of our focal point. And again, you guys have seen this, this type of data multiple times. This is our class sizes at the elementary, which really drives a lot of our decision making. These numbers reflect the desired numbers and the contract max numbers from our current collective bargaining agreement with the LOEA. On the class size at each building, when you see green, green is good, that is going to be below the contract max for each of those classes or grade levels. When you see yellow, that is going to be within about one student per those classes. So like this one here, where I'm hovering over at Orion Oaks, the fourth grade, it's at 27.75 is a class size average, the class max for that, the contract max for that is 28 students, so it's within one student. And then where you see the red is where an overload may exist. You, we have only three grade levels that have overloads in a total of five classes that have overloads. We have one classroom at Carpenter in first grade. We have three classrooms in first grade at Weber, and then we have one classroom in third grade at Weber. So that's five out of 124 class sections at the elementary level that are in an overload, which is phenomenal. That's 96% that are at or below our contract max. And then if you notice, the class size average at each building, it is typically in the 22 to 23 range. Weber kind of holds the honor with that of being at 25.79 as they, they had some higher cohorts there with the two of the overload sections. We continue to be committed to that 10% at each building with the understanding that fluidity can have a measurable impact on those grade levels and grade level percentages. The school of choice students really do, they bring a lot to the district in improving the efficiency of the use of our resources in buildings and they have a very positive impact on our budget to help us allow to continue current programming at each building and each level. Last year, I know that we had a very thoughtful and lengthy conversation about the language and recommendation for schools of choice students. So I think that the board and cabinet did a wonderful job working through that, coming to an agreement and we really did a nice job to collectively in achieving our goals with school of choice through that language and recommendation and therefore my recommendation for this year is going to be to maintain that same language surrounding the schools of choice with the target school of choice enrollment to not exceed 10% of the building population or the total district enrollment for non-resident students where there are space available in kindergarten through eighth grade and learning options for the 2024-25 school year. Are there any questions?
Questions for Adam? I do, oh, do you have something, Heather?
I was just going to, I'm kind of thinking out loud here, but I like the last piece that you were talking about as far as the benefits of schools of choice. Cause I think that, like literally this started like three months before I got on the board and it was like a big deal, right? and it was like a big deal, right? And I think that we went through and it served us very well. I just want to make sure that we're always keeping an eye on it to make sure that it's the right thing to do. And, you know, because obviously, it's a huge moving target that's taking up a lot of people's times, and I realize that we are compensated for that, but I mean, I think, like I feel good about it, I just, we always have to keep that in our sight that at some point, it may be, all right, this is like, you know, I know that we're never putting on additional sections or things like that for schools of choice, it's to fill in seats. So as long as we're doing that, I think it's good, but thank you very much. I think this is very cool.
And you want to mention that we will be providing some additional information around schools of choice and the successes that they've had and what that looks like, and we'll be sharing that with the board here sometime before the school year is completed.
That's awesome, because I know like at the beginning, like it was this big fight for it, right? And we were all about it, and I think it's awesome, you know, how it helps us, how it helps kids, you know, I, I love it. I just think that we always need to not just let it be a spreadsheet that we're determining this arbitrary number, like it needs to be, hey, does this make sense? Like, are we being smart with our dollars, with our resources, with our space?
Sure.
So.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So I just want to add on to this too, and to speak on the positives, over the years, I've watched families move here who came as schools of choice. But I just want to emphasize too, that once they're here, they're ours, and I know we're looking at this as numbers from students who've already been here, and we're calling schools of choice kids, but they're dragons, they're ours. And the one thing that still bothers me that I think the legislature did to us when we got them, now it's better because we're even in, in pricing, in funding, right? So I think we're pretty much across the board. It was always the lesser when we, when we originated, when you got a schools of choice, you took their, if they had less foundation allowance, we got, that's what we got. So it's, that's not even an issue really anymore today, so it's just straight up benefiting them and us on, on, and programming, on our program and keeping us level.
Absolutely.
And to just add on to what Bergit said, I was at a conference over the summer and the presenter made the comment, every student is a school of choice student.
That's true.
In the district because they can choose to leave our district, right? So although, you know, so I just want to add that because that stuck, sticks out in my head, and this Bergit says, you know, once you're here, you're a dragon for life, right? But we also recognize that, you know, every kid, you know, every student's a school of choice student because they, they could go elsewhere as well, and, you know, our goal is of course to, you know, keep all of our dragons with us, so. Did you have any additional, Heather? I know you had your.
I just, yeah, if I could ask just Scott for some clarification, so when you use the phrase like, we want to make sure it's the right thing to do, can you elaborate on what you mean by that?
So, so the purpose for us, the purpose for us doing it originally was pretty much dollar driven, right? Because like, we were firing, or we were laying off librarians and we were getting rid of different sections of, of employees and cutting, looking at cutting programs to where it was presented to us for the schools of choice that, you know, we can bring in these people that, these children that are going to fill seats that we already have, and it's going to get us back to even or, or better, right? So I'm just saying that now that while things are good, right, that we're doing everything for the right reason, and I mean, I, I am totally 100% in agreement with schools of choice, and I think it's awesome. I just think that we need to, you know, be cognizant of that, yeah.
So I was, I'm going to play devil's advocate on that and say, the vantage point for me, having been on the board with that vote, was it was for kids because we got to keep programming. So that benefit to all the kids coming in.
Absolutely.
It was.
But I mean, there was a purpose, you know, there was a defined purpose for it, it wasn't just.
Had to get creative so how you could.
Yeah.
Maintain the, the funding, so.
And I didn't get to vote on it, so, thank you, Bergit.
Any other comments, questions for Adam? Okay. Thank you very much. Thank you for pulling the data, I know it's a lot of work and we appreciate it.
Been up to the last minute.
Right? Very good, okay, so that wraps up human resources, and now we will move on, first of all, to our new assistant superintendent. Welcome for, to your very first meeting up here with us, we welcome you and very excited to have you and look forward to your finance and operations.
Okay, thank you very much. So obviously, we have the second reading of the current fiscal year 2324 budget amendment one. As you recall, the original budget is set in June of 2023. This encompass changes to the general fund, the community service fund, and the food service fund. John went through all the detail at the last meeting. I know we didn't have any additional questions, but I would take any additional questions.
Anything for Andrea, any additional questions?
No, I can't think of any.
I think we should try to stump her.
I know, we can't come up with any questions.
I tried real hard, but sorry.
Be nice.
It was just a suggestion.
Okay.
Next time.
Well, I'll be ready. Well, that, you know, I, I think you got off easy on that one.
Very familiar with the numbers, I don't think you were going to stump her.
I know, well, gosh darn, next time, next time.
Well done, and that was a really good nutshell.
Right? But thank you. Excellent. Okay, well, with that, we are moving right on to our action items. May I please have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I move that we approve the following consent agenda items. Approve payment of the December bills in the amount of $17,485,611 and 18 cents. Approve the minutes from the December 13th regular meeting in closed session, the December 11th finance committee, and the December 15th 2023 policy committee minutes. Out of state and overnight field trip request for the LOHS Business Professionals of America to Grand Rapids, Michigan on March 7th through the 10th of 2024, and also for the LOHS Business Professionals of America to Chicago, Illinois from May 9th through the 14th of 2024, and also approving the Head Start Coordinator's Report.
Excellent, thank you, Bergit. Is there support?
Support.
Any discussion?
I have a question, I don't know if Ben or Heidi can answer it, and it's about the Head Start Coordinator's Report, and I noticed the attendance, that there's been consistent low attendance in that, is that anything we're worried about? That we have anything to do, I know that's the federal.
Yeah, I did notice that as well when I reviewed it, and we actually met with Kim earlier, and there was no, no big concern. She, you know, she talked about some different factors, but it's nothing that we should be alarmed about.
Okay. Just noticed it was a kind of ongoing thing, but thank you.
Okay, excellent. Any other discussion? Perfect. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. I always forget to vote. Any opposed? Perfect, the motion carries, thank you. May please have a motion to approve the Director of Business and Finance.
I move to approve appointing Shannon Hoynah as the Director of Business and Finance as recommended.
That's why I didn't read it.
Thank you, Bergit. Is there support?
Support.
Thank you. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes, thank you very much. Next, may I please have a motion to approve the schools of choice for 2425?
I move to approve the administrative recommendation to authorize schools of choice slots with the target schools of choice enrollment to not exceed 10% of the building population or the total district enrollment for non-resident students where there is space available in kindergarten through grade eight and learning options for 2024-2025 school year as presented.
Thank you, Scott. Is there support?
Support.
Thank you, Heather. Any discussion? Excellent. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion passes, thank you very much, and may I please have a motion to adopt the fiscal year 2024 First Amendment Resolution, the General Appropriations Act?
I move to adopt the fiscal year 2024 First Amendment Resolution as presented.
Thank you, Heather. Is there support?
Support.
Thank you, Bergit. Any discussion? Nope, and I believe this is a roll call vote, Julie?
For Scott?
Yes.
Clarity?
Yes.
A question?
Yes.
Manawi?
Yes.
Yes.
Excellent, thank you, the motion passes. Okay, so that takes care of our action items, we're going to move on to public participation for other non-action items or topics, and we do not have anyone signed up, so that leads us right into the next steps.
And there really was no follow-up items, so we're good.
Oh, I'm sure he knows.
I think he's watching.
I think we should just tell Jake hello because he is watching.
Hi, Jake. Perfect, okay. Closing comments, we'll start down with Mr. Scott Taylor. I'm sorry, God bless, I'm going the wrong way. I need to be here because I'm, when I run the meetings, I'm here. Andrea!
I just want to welcome Shannon, very excited to have her join our team. I'm looking forward to the positive energy there, and also congratulations to all the athletics and happy new year.
Thank you, Adam.
One thing I did not mention regarding schools of choice, our second semester schools of choice application is opening next week, that's for learning options only.
Okay.
But I didn't mention that up there, and I meant to mention that, so, thank you, Mark. Yes, this week, there we go.
Okay.
And I wanted to welcome Shannon Hoynah as well, and welcome to Andrea up here officially. Great report, just, you set the bar high, so.
Love it.
Thank you to our high school squad for the athletics and esports presentations, just awesome display of all the opportunities that our students have in Lake Orion, so I appreciate all of that, so they did great work. Thank you.
Thank you, Adam. Heidi?
All right, happy new year to everybody, and congratulations to Shannon and Andrea as well, and thank you to Nick and the high school and our student for presenting this evening, that was great to hear about esports. And the other I wanted to give a shout out to, there's been a lot of people involved in the planning and preparation for our PD on Monday, including the wellbeing fair, so thank you to all of those that have helped with that.
Excellent, thank you, Heidi. Ben?
It is hard because I want to echo all those things, I won't repeat them all, and I was definitely going to recognize the PD because it certainly was a humongous undertaking, and certainly, welcome Andrea, congratulations, that was, that was a quick update, that was good, and that was exactly what I had asked you to do, so that was perfect. And you're doing a great job, and looking forward to transitioning Shannon as well. So congratulations to the new board officers and having a successful organizational meeting, so, thank you.
Thank you.
And happy new year.
Thank you. Scott, now you're up.
Man, you had me and then you stopped me, so.
I know, I apologize.
Echo what everybody had to say, I want to thank Bergit for all her years of leadership that she's given to this board, I think this is the first time since I've been on the board that she wasn't an officer, but that's okay, we're going to sit down here and be the old timers.
We'll be the anchors down there, right?
But just really appreciate your love and passion for our kids and for our schools and for this board. Thank you.
Excellent. Susan?
Yeah, it is hard to just, you're going to echo everything, but welcome, it's great to have you here, you set the bar high with that really short.
Yeah.
I mean, I don't, I'm not sure John ever did it, but welcome, it's great to have you and your new, and on your first meeting, you've got a new staff member already, so that's great. Happy new year to everyone, a great first meeting, and looking forward to a successful 2024.
Excellent, thank you, Heather.
Yeah, congratulations to Shannon, Andrea, awesome, so excited to have some new blood, and wanted to congratulate myself on doing my first policy committee report, and.
Excellent job.
Thank you, it was brief and to the point, and so I think, I also want to just put a plug, I feel like Mark should have closing comments too, but just throwing that out there. Put the kibosh on that, that's fine. But yeah, that's it, happy new year, super excited for 2024.
Thank you. Bergit?
Well, if Mark is closing comment, so is Julie. But yeah, what a great meeting, thank you to all the presenters, Andrea, welcome, it's a pleasure to have you, and thank you, Scott, for your kind words, that means a lot, thank you very much. I, I can't get over that, it's Martin Luther King Day coming up on that, you said that and I was like, Monday?
Yeah, that's wild.
Wouldn't we just start back? But hey, it's a new year, we're on, hitting the ground running, and I'm just, this will be my last plug because trivia night's going to occur, but on the 20th, we got trivia night for blessings in the backpack, we are really excited to be up and running again, and we've got a few tables left if anybody wants a table. And go, go in to compete with the, people are out to have fun, there are a few people who will take it seriously, and I'm ready for them, I'm one of the refs. So let me know if you want to join that, it's going to be a lot of fun, and I'm looking forward to a great year with you guys again, congratulations to the officers, and go Dragons.
Thank you. Yeah, I just, of course, dino, I do want to thank Bergit for, of course, all your mentorship, since not only this past year, but being on the board in general, and it's, it's really been appreciated, and, yeah, really, thank you for that. And I will say, I have been to the trivia nights as a participant, it is a lot of fun. If you've never done it, even if you have, please do it again, this time I'm going to be on the other side, working, helping Bergit, so I think I'm excited for that as well. I did want to mention something that I, we forgot to mention in the organizational meeting, and was actually, in the past, we have had school assignments, meaning we called them the Board Buddy System. And, you know, with discussions amongst board members and with Ben, it, it came to, the intent was very good, the intent was assign a board member to a building to try to have that board member attend, you know, as whatever they could, and over the past year or two, it, the system just wasn't honestly working, there were some inequities, certain buildings, people could get to certain buildings more, and obviously, that is never the intent, you know? So what we decided to do was to no longer have board members assigned to particular buildings with the goal of, if there's something at stadium at 1:00 and, you know, Thursday, and Heather and I can get there, great.